And thank you to the Waukesha Freeman who fortunately is nice enough to record this this evening. It'll go on YouTube for those who may want to watch it again, or those who weren't able to watch it again. Yeah, or those who maybe weren't able to come this evening. We're gonna go over a variety of topics. Matt Masterson here from the Freeman has some questions that he's prepared for me. And the reason this all kind of started in the first place is doing some surveys I did last summer and then this winter. And kind of parlaying that into how do we talk about and use this information now? And that was actually a lot of suggestions in the comments were you should have a town hall meeting. So I figured let the snow melt and let's do it and see what happens and see how many people show up. So we're gonna talk about some of the survey results, what I think they mean, and go over that information as well. We'll hear from Dan and the chief, and we're certainly gonna take some questions from the audience as well. Just wanted to be upfront, again, it's the first time we've done this, so we'll flow it as well as possible. If we don't get to a question, feel free to communicate it with me privately, I'll make sure you get the answer. Most likely, I'll probably be asked a question I may not know the answer to, I'll get that answer for you later as well. I just want to make sure we respect everyone's time and try and get out of here right around 8:15. Definitely want to be out by nine o'clock, because the alarm gets set. We have one officer here.
I like this patch home already here.
Good. With that, I'll turn it over to Matt and over the Freeman's questions.
So I drafted a list of mostly city-related questions. There's some things on there related to the water application as well as the police department. But I'll start with some mostly city government-related questions, directly for Aaron. First off, as you mentioned about the snow melting, there's some issues in January. You mentioned about some snowfall that really clogged up some roads and sidewalks. And I want to know what does the city, what are the city's policies on clearing roads, clearing sidewalks, and making sure people get around after, after clear weather conditions?
And actually, one more thing. This is Alderman Eric, how this stat who's gonna help us out with some AV this evening. He's gonna pull up the city website. The city launched a new website a week, 10 days ago. And he's gonna pull up some information there and show you where we have, we actually have ordinances that talk about snow removal, specifically on sidewalks. Now, to your question, we had some issues and what are some of the policies and procedures? Our public works department, they have plans in place when we have large storms. And there's different routes, I believe there's 23 different routes. They start with the emergency route, so that if an ambulance needs to get to someone to get them to the hospital, that's, that takes priority. And it kind of goes on from there with the last ones unfortunately being cul-de-sacs. Someone has to go last unfortunately. And we had, we had one storm where we had some opportunities when it came to some of the snow removal. And that had to do with the uniqueness of the storm, with the amount it came down, the speed in which it came down, how wet it was, how frozen it was afterwards. And quite honestly, it had something to do with equipment as well. Would some equipment go down District 12 out here? Our route, the truck for our route went down, I believe it was about four hours. And that's something we look at, certainly from a budgetary standpoint, is are we replacing equipment fast enough? I've been a member of the finance committee since being elected in 2013. Alderman Joe Piper is here this evening, he's the chair of the finance committee. Alderman Mannion is also here, and he's on the finance committee. So those are things we look at. And certainly getting feedback from you, and some of the things we'll talk about tonight too are taxes versus services. You know, what do we want to pay for? Because unfortunately, having, having everything on a Cadillac level, of course, is a cheap one. That kind of answers your question. And then Eric has the ordinance up here, if you want to slowly scroll through that.
Sure.
But basically, the sidewalk snow removal is the responsibility of the homeowner. So it's something we always want to try to do with our time and fashion, of course.
You mentioned the new city website. In addition to that, I understand the city's going to be beginning social media accounts up here, Facebook, Instagram. How do members of city government use those tools to better connect with increasingly tech-savvy constituents?
Sure. I'll take this opportunity to plug my own social media then. I started a Facebook page actually back in 2012 when I was running, as well as Twitter. So I'm very active on both of those, and they can be an amazing tool. It's something, I'm disappointed it's taken this long actually for the city to embrace. There's a lot of other municipalities, a lot of other elected officials that use it. You know, currently, we actually don't have a social media policy, which could be dangerous in some ways. In my case, I've managed to use it on a very effective level. Facebook is primarily city-related information, things like that. Twitter, if you want to get to know me well, follow me on Twitter. A lot more personal things on there, but once we encompass a policy, I think it'd be great to have those pages active. Because, you know, there's over a billion people in the world on Facebook. That's where people are. Some of the best feedback I've gotten from constituents is thanking me for being where they are, which is online. And that's, that's an effective tool. I used it with Walt this afternoon with a neighborhood site that I use as well. So I think once we launch that and do it properly, it'll be really effective in community engagement, resident engagement. Which, you know, part of why we do this, and part of why I do the social media thing is the more you know and the more you're empowered, the more people want to get involved, the more positive the experience is. There's far too many, you know, call and press one for this and things that make our lives a little difficult. Local government should not be involved. That's part of the reason I do it. And I know that'll be the city's goal as well.
This was a topic of last week's county council meeting, but it's something that sort of affects everybody in the downtown area. What can the city do to better market its vacant property?
Yeah, we, there was a study done recently by the UW Extension that identified roughly 20% of storefronts were empty. That's kind of alarming when comparable cities were around the 6%, 7% mark, so over twice a month. So what the city's done is embarked on a rebranding effort for downtown. And we started with additional monies that were put in the budget for 2016. I'm a member of the Community Development Block Grant Committee as well. A committee that takes dollars that we get from the county and allocates them towards different programs, different services. And some of it's even infrastructure. And we allocated some money from that that wasn't gonna be used, which essentially saved us future tax-related dollars towards this. And, you know, I get the question sometimes, what's our role, why are we doing that? And to me, it all ties together when you talk about taxes. We need businesses in those storefronts. That helps everybody's tax bill when they're successful, when downtown is successful. And there's certainly been a void since the bid was dissolved a few years ago. We used to have a business improvement district that their goal was to do a lot of these things. I think it's good that we've taken this initiative instead of just letting it continue to spiral down. And yes, it's gonna take some money, but I think, I work in marketing and advertising, I put my full-time job. And I'm glad that they're having me be a part of kind of how it's used, because used in a more effective way. One thing I told them is I said, this can either be some of the most effective money we use in the budget, or don't use it right, we'll put it on fire, we don't want to do that. And so there's gonna be a work group put together of other marketing experts, including people from the Business Alliance. They've asked me to be a part of that as well. So look for an event this summer that we'll put together. New signage, wayfinding, new welcome to Waukesha sign, at least four or two. So look for, and I truly think it will give it a jumpstart that it needs again. In lieu of a bid, which you can look at the dollars, but I believe this is probably cheaper than what we put into the bid.
Question that's more related to your district, but also affects everybody in the city. Fire Department is looking for a location to put fire station number three, and just look at some areas in your district. I don't know if you can update us on where that process is at, or what impact that location would have on citizens of the city.
Yes. We spoke about this in close session, which for various reasons we do for time to time. And the reason being is not to keep it in for the public, but from an negotiating standpoint, when the city is trying to buy properties or something. The location that has been talked about and has been reported on is next to St. John Newman Catholic Church. Kind of where the bypass will eventually come in. And the city, many years ago, did a seven-minute response time, if that's acceptable. When you're taking seven minutes under, and currently roughly 40% of District 12 isn't covered under that worth where the current fire stations are. That's the reason why the relocation. I believe we've talked about and approved putting in the police substation as well. So that officers aren't transporting like shoplifting criminals, things like that, from say the shops or if something happens on this side of town, all the way to the police station, they do some of that processing there. And so to me, from the, it kind of ties to property value. When you try to sell or buy a house and it's gonna take 10 minutes for an ambulance to get there as opposed to three minutes, to me, that's more valuable. So I feel really good about where we're at in the process. The money that we're spending on it, I believe is done in a conservative way. Because we'll look to, of course, sell the station that we had and house, we'll improve some of that money that we spend.
Which I'm sure all our taxpayers in here are concerned about, why their taxes levels are higher where they are as a consequence of those tax levels low, and why are they having a lot of current problems?
Sure, yeah, and kind of how I mentioned before, you know, I'll go over this information too with the surveys. Is over 92% of people said they feel safe in Waukesha. That's a great number, but attributed to our police department, our fire department. You know, we have, we have a lot here where we're seventh largest city in the state. So we're not Milwaukee, of course, but we're not a small town either. So we have a lot of infrastructure that we have to maintain. So when we look at a budget, you know, some of the feedback I've got is, oh, just cut spending. And there's not a whole lot to cut, quite frankly. You know, when we go over the operating budget, roughly 81% of it is salaries and benefits. So as a finance committee member, when we get the budget, that's not something, I can't say, well, let's cut dental insurance by 30%. We just can't do that. That's handled more on the level of the city administrator who works with the department and has to put together a budget. Things like electricity, fuel for vehicles, things like that, those bills have to be paid. So when we really get down to it, there's very, very little that is actually spent on, you can say, investment. A portion of the budget that I'm always most excited about, and I like to get feedback on, is our capital improvement program, which is our larger expenditures that we borrow for. And part of the current trend that we are struggling with, and this has been reported on as well, is we have, we do mostly 10-year borrowing. So what we borrowed 10 years ago should be dropping off. The problem is that our needs for what we need to borrow for are more than what's dropping off. So for instance, if we borrowed $25 million, 10 years ago, that's paid off, but now our needs are $32 million. So that's going to make an impact on our taxes the following year. And so that's, that was actually the reason I did the surveys in the first place. I did them in July, the budget season starts September, October. Is, you know, should we be spending $285,000 to renovate Carnegie Room at the library? Should we spend $291,000 on the West Hall Performance Center? Those things make an impact. And so, you know, overall, let me say this to the question, why are my taxes so high? I hope to explain some of it. And some of it is quite daunting when we go over the needs of the city and we have to prioritize. And that's why budget meetings are some of the longest ones in the year.
In reviewing those, some of those survey answers, what are the most popular things that came up from Friday Night Live and the farmer's market, what's the city doing to maintain those or even improve those events that were made? Sorry, reviewing some of the survey questions. A popular topic among many residents that were surveyed was Friday Night Live and the farmer's market. So I'm asking, what is the city doing to maintain or improve those early events?
And yeah, in those events, you know, recently, we talked about what should be done with the farmer's market. And decision was made that the WPPA now outruns that. And they also run Friday Night Live. So WPPA does a great job at running events. There's no doubt about that. And so what does the city do? They're a private organization, similar to say the Chamber of Commerce, who does the Christmas parade. And so the city, we work with them as a partner when we can, but it's not necessarily, you know, just talked about taxes. So it's not something that we financially put things into, things that the city runs, of course, we want to do that. But we want to be supportive of events and parties that people want to put on. People really enjoy that, that's a, I kind of love that under culture activities. The only thing I kind of caution is, and this kind of has to do with the downtown, we talked about why the city is putting money into it, is events aren't economic development. So it's nice that we have these events, you know, in summer in particular. But obviously, we have 20% vacancy downtown, and what's not being done, since we improved the CAD a bit, it just means you want to make sure we support it and profit there.
One last question, what, it sort of leads back to the city website and social media. What can more people do to get involved with city government?
Yeah, I mean, getting involved, of course, always doesn't mean running for something. There's so many volunteer opportunities with our police department, with our park and rec department. And there's various boards and commissions that people can be part of the community, that it's not a big time commitment, but it's also very, very important. Mike Payne is here, who is on our planning commission. He's not an alderman, but we have four members of that planning commission that are non-elected positions. But they're really, really important because they're determining, to a point, what comes into the city, what it looks like. And that has a lot to do with development here in the city as well, just one example. You know, and I'd encourage anyone, if you're interested in just learning, hey, what's out there? What does it, what does it entail? Contact me, contact the mayor, we're always happy to provide you that information.
All right. So would you like to get into some of the survey question answers?
Yeah. So like I said, last summer, I was actually sitting in my office of work, having lunch. And I thought it'd be fun to do a survey. We had actually gotten one from the city as a city employee to take a survey. And I'm like, yeah, I can do this. And over my lunch break, I put together the first one. And I put it out, I put it out on a Nextdoor site, which I know people here, I put it on Facebook, I put it on Twitter. And within an hour, I had 50 responses. And I was kind of hoping for around 60, putting it out there for five days. I ended up with over, over 230 responses in that first one. And that stayed consistent, so I said, okay, I'll do this once a week for a month, over some budget topics. Mainly the CIP program, to see, okay, what do we, what should we be investing in? What do my constituents want me to vote for? As we go through those decisions. And then I did another one in the winter, and we're gonna go over some of the results here. Again, I did four in December, but these are kind of some of the notable. The responses went down a little bit in the winter, down still to about 170, considering how many people I was actually sending it out to. That's an amazing participation rate. So how informed do you feel by your local officials? I looked at this a couple of ways. It's disappointing that one out of five people said rarely or never at all. On the other hand, eight out of 10, there is some engagement with the people that they elected. This one I thought was good though. Once you do talk to us, three out of four were happy with how we dealt with them. 10% never got back. And this, this kind of goes to 71%. And now we have a new website. And again, I talked about where people are at, people are online. And so the better website that we have now, it's kind of difficult to find information on the old one unless you knew how to use it, and that just sometimes takes time. But to find things like the sidewalk clearing ordinance that we talked about earlier, was kind of difficult to find. But it was also interesting to see that the alderman got as much, just about as much asking as we were. And then this is a good way, like how do we communicate? You know, I apologize Freeman, there's only 8.9% on that one. But again, it kind of goes to the email being online, social media blog being online, that's nine out of 10 people. Again, that's where people are at, that's where we should be communicating to as well as any given event like this. This was an interesting one. If you were mayor for a day, what would you do? Got some, a variety of answers, some, some kind of funny, we need to drink, but a lot of them were very, were very good and had a lot to do with talking about city departments, what they were doing in city departments. Which, to me, what that told me was, the residents in Waukesha, albeit we could increase engagement, I don't necessarily believe it always comes from you, it should come more from us. That if they're knowledgeable enough to know that I would do this and this and this, we just need to reach out more. Because then people do have really good ideas that we should be fostering. A place to work, of course, jobs, the economy, always something very important to talk about. I looked at a neutral answer, actually it's a good one, because we have some pretty good thriving communities around us. Brookfield, Berlins, Milwaukee. So to be comparable with them, I thought was good. But also, to get 20% to say that really good job opportunities, that's, that's great. We do have a lot of large, successful companies in Waukesha. The perception as far as place to live compared with other cities? Again, comparing with the other cities, I found that was a positive thing. And then this one, difficult, because again, everybody's in a different situation. Some people know they're gonna move, some people know they're not going anywhere, some people just moved here. But again, to have 50/50 or yes, to say yes, we'll be here five to 10 years, was positive. Do you feel you get a positive return on your taxes? This was an interesting one, because, you know, nobody, nobody, when I knocked on doors, I did it in 2013, 14, and then a little bit this last year when I got signatures to run again. No one says, hi, yeah, you can raise my taxes, no problem, we don't pay nearly enough here. You know, one of the main questions I get is why, why are my taxes so high? So if you're gonna pay a lot of taxes, at least get some return, right? Get streets that are paved, have a safe community, have good schools. And I wanted to kind of give it an education of how the tax bill's broken out. There is a county and educational part of that as well. But I thought 72%, either hadn't, they hadn't thought about it, or says, yes, I do get a little return post-tax. And this is an interesting one, and it is, you know, the chief will give a presentation as well. But talking about the taxes here. The smallest number on here is 4.9%. So people saying, only 4.9% of people said public safety, I'd rate a third out of these. The largest number on here is the public safety, which is number one. It's even double what lower taxes are. And so when we talk about going over our budget, the, you know, the large part of that again is salary and benefits. And those things, those things have to get paid. And a lot of the feedback I got in these two was, we need more police officers. You know, maybe we'll stop investing in this, but we need more officers on the street. I don't disagree. But also, the balance that I like to look at you and ask you is, we'll gladly put more policing on the streets, but it's gonna cost more money, of course, it's not free. This was the stat I talked about earlier as far as feeling safe in Waukesha. And this, I asked this question in the summer surveys as well. And it was at 84%, and I gave an option of a comment. So 11% of people said other, but there were various comments in there. When I took away that, it was that number jumped from 84 to 92.5. So when people really gave a straight answer, the straight answer would be, yeah, we feel safe here. And I'll just say, just kind of to go to that. My wife and I, my wife Angie is here, we moved to Waukesha in 2009. No children, purchased a house down the road, had no idea how we'd fill it. Now I need one twice the size. We've had, we've had three children since then, a four-year-old boy, a three-year-old boy, and a little girl. And we lived in Brookfield apartment, so we rented, moved here from Minnesota in 2007. It's like, get rid of my house, start a family, where do we want to do that? Literally could be anywhere, Milwaukee, Glendale, Nominee Falls, Waukesha. And I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to research, and so I looked at all the different things, you know, property value, schools, safety. I'll say even, even back then, safety was probably the number one thing in my head. Property value was as well, you get a lot for your money here as compares, you like to be assured. But it was interesting to see that still, still hold true, you know, about 70 to 75. So I didn't vote in the survey, but I would vote in. This, this is a question here that again, I know the chief's gonna discuss. I was not in the council when the council voted not to consolidate dispatch, 2011, 12, if I have it right? But I wanted to kind of get a gauge on this, and I can, you know, fully communicate my position on it, is I don't know. If I had to vote tomorrow, I really don't know, I'd say it'd be 50/50. I've done three ride-alongs with the police department. What I need to do is spend some time in the dispatch center and probably speak with the fire department as well. And of course, speaking with the chief, who's a constituent of my opinion here. We're in the middle of doing a study right now, an independent study that's supposed to give us some of that feedback. We're interviewing residents, dispatchers, so we'll get back some of the money as far as cost savings and what we might be giving out as far as services. But I thought this was interesting, because 32.2% still don't know either. So I wasn't alone in not knowing. So it's, it's certainly an issue that I hope the city really, really communicates out strongly when we get that information, so that constituents know regardless of what side you're on. All, we have all the information, we can go through the process of voting. Then again, aside from public safety, now granted, I chuckle with this one. This was done in December, it was done the week before we had the plowing that some folks wanted to see impressed with. But still, of course, removing garbage is what we play at, and that's what we have to have. And then Dan Duke, he acts, gonna talk tonight about our application for Lake Michigan Water. But this was interesting to see here locally, right in our community, what do we think? This has been talked about, and talked about, and talked about for 10 years. And it's in the media a lot, especially lately, because we're kind of getting down to the end. But also, it's interesting, because this district that I represent was mainly a farm field about 20 years ago. And every year, I get a listing of all the, all the homes sold in Waukesha. And I go through them, again, this is the, kind of the nerd in me a little bit. Because I go through them all and find out which ones were in District 12. And we had that, two years ago, was 67 homes, and last year was 75. So that's a lot of homes in one district of 15 districts that have turned over. And so again, it's kind of that continuous need to get constituents that information, so I'm so glad you're here. And this is one, again, will be a question for the chief as far as body cameras. It's not something we've talked about doing, that I, to my knowledge at least. But just kind of an interesting, hot topic out there, that some cities in, studies I've seen are larger cities, larger than Waukesha. They've seen some success with it. Of course, that's another one of those things, though, that comes with a cost. And as we've kind of talked, it's not necessarily hardware cost, but storage of video is unfortunately what's very expensive. And then this one, you know, for, well before my time, but from what I've been told, there was kind of a kit that can down the road on street repair. And that unfortunately puts us in a situation now to where we are behind. It's not an issue necessarily in District 12, but we all drive around the city and we know our streets can be and we know our streets can use some, some repair. And we have increased that, my first year on the finance committee, minor street repair, we had in the budget one point one million, we just flat doubled it, because we, we had the capacity to do that work. And it's a very tangible thing, that someone can see their tax dollars at work. You know, the road may be closed, but it's because it's being fixed. And then do you plan on voting? Kind of more of an educational question as well, that there's fifteen districts in the city of Waukesha, nine of them are up for reelection, including myself, I don't have an opponent, so will see me around for another three years of this. But also, I believe twenty-five Waukesha County Board seats for election this year, so. You know, of course, we have the presidential primary, but what I always say is, who you vote for for alderman or county board is more important than who you vote for for president. Not that that vote doesn't matter, but of course it does. But if you have an issue with speeding on your street, you're not gonna call the White House, you're not gonna call Congress and send some runner, because you need a stop sign. You know, and, and they deal with, of course, very, very large issues, but not necessarily day-to-day in our lives, and that's what, that's what we're for, when we have those issues, and that's why, again, we talk about website, social media, being responsive, that's why I ask all those questions, is because they're, they're important, and quite frankly, the taxpayers pay the salaries that we get. So our aldermen are, are part-time, we make seven thousand dollars a year as an alderman, so, so you take that times fifteen, to me, maybe I'm biased, but for a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year, you get fifteen people's expertise, really on a full-time level. People work in law enforcement, people work in marketing, people work in various different ways, about thirteen different degrees on the council, it's, to me, a pretty good use of money, actually. So, but my point is that, again, you pay the salary, so we should always contribute. That is that portion. I don't know how we're doing on time, but we, just take, I, I talked a lot just now, so maybe I'll just take a couple of questions, and then we'll move to, move to the police chief's presentation. Just to give you a start, I have a few other questions. Yeah?
What happened to the bid?
What happened to the bid? How much time do you have? I'll give you the greatest hits of it, and a little bit is maybe my opinion. The bid was dissolved, and it was a business district downtown, and if more than fifty percent of the assessed value agrees it should be dissolved, it goes away. There were some people who wanted it dissolved, from everything I know, the reason they wanted it dissolved was because they didn't like the way that some of their tax dollars had been used on it. And I believe when they went around, they got sixty, I believe sixty-two percent of the assessed value to dissolve it, so it wasn't really that close. It's unfortunate, of course, because when, I think a bid is, exists and is running functionally, it can be really successful. Some of the cooler downtowns that I've seen have been, so I'd say Waukesha is one of them, they do a pretty nice job there. But that happened in two thousand twelve, thirteen, it took us a year to, to go through all the assets and have them distributed, because the monies that were in there went back to the people who owned property, so. Hope that answers your question. It was, it was kind of, it was kind of a hairy situation, to be honest with you, so. So it's a difficult district to represent, for sure, because that's his, his area. Yes?
What percentage of land in Waukesha is non-taxable?
Twenty-four point seven percent.
Is that higher or lower than the average community in Wisconsin?
That I don't know. If I had to, I will guess, though. I will guess it's higher, and the reason is, is because we do have, and it's a good asset for the city, we have a lot of parks, but parks are, are taxable, of course, but I always ask that question another time, that's why I know, I know I'm like, wow, don't give me that much credit, I, I was asked, and, you know, kind of, and that's, I get questions from people, and my job isn't necessarily to know all the answers, although I'm really glad you asked that one.
Glad you asked.
Yeah. But I, you know, someone else asked me that a while back, and I, it's our job to serve as the intermediary and go find out the answer, and get back to them, so thankfully, I've been able to store some of that information. Yeah?
As a follow-up on that, do you think that has an impact on the tax rate in Waukesha? I mean, I've noticed that there are quite a few nonprofit organizations compared to, say, Brookfield, if you go there, you don't see that element?
Yeah, I wouldn't be really, really surprised if that example of Brookfield had the same amount, I would guess they have less. To answer your question, yes, it does, it does matter. And I'm not, I'm just using it as example, but were we to, in some areas, maybe sell some city land or park land for development, that then put something on the tax rolls, that's something I'm always very conscious of, that if we can take something in a responsible way from the tax exempt, to, again, collecting some taxes on it and serving the community well, why not do it? Thank you. Want to go, chief?
Got a couple more hands up, or you're out?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead, we'll do two more, and then we'll.
Previously, you were talking about taxes.
Yeah.
Has anybody ever checked to see how we compare to other similar-sized communities, starting with the state?
Yes, yeah, that's information, our, our finance director, Rich Abbott, does a great job, he's more of a numbers guy than maybe anybody I've seen. And he's given us some comparisons, and overall, I would say we're higher, we're not the highest out there, we're very, very low on fees, but we're, but we're higher on taxes. And so, you know, the collective may pay a little bit higher on certain individual things, we pay lower than some other cities. But every, you know, it's nice to compare, on taxes, there almost could be, you know, nothing more important to compare, but we also have to kind of look, make sure it's as apples and apples as possible, because every, obviously, city's got, got unique challenges.
If you were mayor for the, for a day, what would you do?
As mayor for a day, what I'd do? It's funny, I've been the one who posed the question, I've never even thought about it myself. I would spend the day doing three things. I would talk with and work with city employees, not necessarily directors, no, no offense, guys, but, but people who, you know, the, the, why it's valuable to do a police ride-along, you know what the actual officer is out there dealing with. But I would talk with police, I'd talk with firefighters, I'd talk with the gardener, the guy that cuts the grass at cemetery, because the people who work full-time, I have very valuable, very valuable ideas and feedback. Secondly, as mayor, I can, I have the day, so that's one thing I would do. The second thing I would do is just kind of randomly knock on doors and hear from people. That's, again, I just have a lot of value in that. And three, I can set up a Facebook account and a Twitter account, and start that interaction again where people are at, online, and make sure that that's up and running. Off the top of my head, I guess those are the three. All right?
I'm gonna start off, my picture's up there, sorry, apologies for that. My name's Russell Jack, and I am your police chief, I'm the, for the seventy thousand seven hundred eighteen people, I always refer to myself as the people's chief, that's why I work for you guys. And, and there it is, my alderman, I want to start off by thanking him for doing this tonight. I always look for opportunities to talk to the public, whether it's the Kiwanis, or Rotary Club, or town meeting like this, whatever it is, because we need to share the message. You, you have to have an opportunity to ask questions. So I did prepare a PowerPoint for tonight. The first part of it is very simple, I just talked at Kiwanis on, on Tuesday, giving kind of updated police department, wondering a little bit about. And then for tonight, I also talked, dispatch should be a hot topic here, in the city, it's not as big a decision as the water, so I'm not saying, not saying that by any means, our water is very, very important, but the issue of whether or not we're gonna outsource our dispatch center, not consolidate, we're gonna outsource our dispatch center, that decision is very, very important to us and to you, and I'm a city taxpayer also, I live in there, it's District, strong stone throw from here is where I live, so it matters to me also. I want to start off, but two things, before you start PowerPoint, somebody over here talked about services, I want somebody to ask a question over here. I've lived in two different communities down here, I'm a, I'm a northern guy from Wisconsin, I'm a northern Wisconsin, we had no city services, my little town, they didn't pull the streets in here, just drove through them with a four-wheel drive truck. So you can't compare that city. But I've lived in Berlin and Waukesha for, during my career, about twenty-six years down here. It comes down to services, it really does, and I know you're, you're alderman, I'll be alderman, we'll tell you that, because when I lived in Berlin, we didn't have sidewalks, didn't have garbage, didn't have streetlights, didn't have a lot of stuff. I moved to Waukesha years back, and you have all those things, and many, many more. When streets plow at eight o'clock in the morning, if people aren't, if streets aren't clear in Waukesha in twenty-four hours, we're all up in arms, all of us. If we're not plowed by eight o'clock, we're up in arms. If my streetlight doesn't work, we're calling the city, we're reporting a problem on the city website. That's what you get. I can, so I can tell you I've lived in two different cities, and I'm sure other people in here have, there's a night and day difference. Taxes were cheaper in there, in Wauke, in New Berlin, they worked, but I got forty percent of the services. So there's a difference in that, kind of, they add on to, to all of Perry said, about answering that question. I also want, the other thing I want to start with, before I get to PowerPoint, is I will make a one for the City Waukesha Police Department Facebook page, we've been active for years. I just posted last night, my officer Ryan McCarry received the award from NAMI for his excellence, Officer Excellence Award, and I posted that, the night before last night, actually, but I posted it yesterday, and got that done, and we're very active on our website, on our Facebook. So please like us, follow us on Facebook, everything we post on Facebook goes right to Twitter, so follow us on Twitter also, and I, I believe, just like Alderman Perry does, a lot of the aldermen, it's very good to be active on Facebook and Twitter, because that's where most people get it. I look around here, there's a few people with gray hair like I have, so maybe not everybody as much, but surely the, the younger generation for sure is very, very active on, on social media, so please like us on Facebook and follow us, too. So I'm just looking through some of this stuff here, this is our mission statement here, we developed a new mission statement about a year ago, I've been chief, this is my seventh year, but we had a mission statement just like everybody else does in business and the public sector, two paragraphs long, full of a bunch of good information, great work, meaningful, but nobody knows it. It sits on a plaque somewhere, and not one person, other than somebody studying for promotion, or the chief of police, knows the mission statement.
That's not a mission statement.
That's a mission statement. "We have a pledge to serve with integrity, honor, and courage." This is throughout our whole department, it's using our awards, our promotions, our discipline, I was in training today, earlier, it was on my shirt, we, we live, breathe the mission statement of Waukesha Police Department, every single employee knows it. That's a true mission statement, not some fancy two paragraph mission statement. And that was made about two years, or excuse me, fifteen years ago, and that's how everybody had it in time. Times have changed, we have to be progressive, we have to think like people think, that's a true mission statement. I brought these priorities from when I was a lieutenant, and a lieutenant's police department is in charge of a shift, like three PM to eleven PM, there's our afternoons, day shift or night shift, and these have always been my four priorities up here. And then I became captain, which means I'm in charge of all the patrol officers, and then I became chief, and now I'm in charge of the whole department. So you can think how the rank structure goes, these are now the priorities of the department, okay? And they make sense, safety has to be our number one priority in Waukesha. It's a, a priority when you look at any city. We may not talk about it, but just think if we had a city today, we're talking about in training of sixty-three thousand, Lodi, California, has seventy-two homicides a year, seventy-two homicides. How much do you think people care about their library, their parks, or any, any other city service that we provide there? So it does have to start with safety, you have to have a safe community, which we do, and I'm glad his survey showed that, I actually didn't, I did, I know you did do the survey, so I'm one of those ninety-one point something percent. I did do your survey, actually. And, but that's where it does start, it doesn't mean it ends there, just because you have a safe city doesn't mean you have a great city. You have to all, have all, we have award-winning parks, we have a great library, we're getting out of new water, all those things that we have, businesses, those are all part of that having a great city. But communication is number two, we have to be able to talk to each other. I truly have an open door policy at the police department, I'm the only chief that I know that actually has an open door policy. Everyone says they do, and when I ask them what, how does somebody talk to you, chief, you know, my fellow chiefs, they, I say, can somebody walk into your office any time of the day and bring up an idea, ask you a question, whatever it is? The, what's the answer? As long as they ask my secretary for a meeting. That's not an open door policy. A true open door policy means you can talk to the chief. I have lunch with my guys every day that I work at the station, obviously I'm out of the office sometimes. You have to be in touch with your people, you have to have an open door policy, you have to communicate with them. The third one on there is teamwork, we have to be able to work as a team. When you see us, especially the guys in uniform like I'm wearing today, they're mostly in a squad by themselves, aren't they? They're receiving five around one, one person in the car. But almost every call they handle, a lot of them are the, they're working constantly as a team, and we have to have that team. And number four on there is accountability, accountability is extremely important. Accountability doesn't mean you have to be perfect, accountability means you're gonna correct mistakes when you make them, we do make mistakes, every day somebody, I have a hundred and fifty-seven employees, I don't know which one made a mistake today, besides me, I mean, I'm sure some of them did today, but we talk about them and we fix them. So those are our priorities, priorities up there. Our department philosophy has remained the same as the prior chief, and it's not gonna change as long as I'm chief. We practice community policing here, it's a philosophy, a policing philosophy. Some departments have changed what's called intelligence-led policing, I mean, just what the numbers say, that's how you're gonna police. That's part of our philosophy. The first one up there is most important, is community partnerships. There's seventy thousand seven hundred and eighteen people, last time I checked, in Waukesha. We have a hundred and fifty-seven people in Wauke, in the police department, there's no way that I can keep this city safe without all of you. And I commend each one and every one of you for coming here tonight, I thought there might be five people, nobody wants to spend an evening listening to people, especially a police chief, probably came to here, Dan, I'm guessing, you just have to listen to me before you get to him. But we need each and every one of you in the businesses, Carroll University, the hospital, all the major businesses, we have liaisons to all those major areas, because community partnerships are so important. The intelligence-led part is number two, the problem solving. How do we solve problems in the community? Whether it's on your house, or whether it's in your neighborhood, or whether it's a city one problem, those are, that's how we practice in Waukesha. Let's give you a little overview of the department here, so you have kind of a, a general idea of who we have, and again, the people are the most important of our department. We have a very nice building, it was built in nineteen ninety-one, we moved in ninety-one, very nice building, nice squad cars, we have the bullets and all the different things that the council gives us, thank you very much, alderman, appreciate that. And, but, the people are by far the most important part, because if you don't have good people, none of the rest of that stuff matters. It's just an idea we have, we have a hundred and eighteen authorized sworn people, sworn meaning that they carry a gun, they're police officers. And of those fourteen are females, and a hundred and four are males, and you look at it going, people must be discriminating against females. No, those numbers are actually a lot better in the last six and a half years than I've been a chief. It's a very male-dominated profession, you don't have a lot of female cops over the wall, we have about ten percent, twelve percent, that's a lot for a department. And I've worked very hard to recruit properly and recruit female officers and promote female officers. The civilian people, our clerical staff, our dispatchers, our parking agents, those kind of people, part-time civilian, we have parking agents that are part-time, hopefully like so many people, parking ticket hanging on your, on your windshield in the morning. And then we have the community service officers, and we also have a chaplain. Chaplain is listed last on there, but by far, at least in our department, he helps us all with the emotional survival, city employ, or excuse me, police department employees and citizens of Waukesha. He responds to all the death notifications, and he works with those families on many, many calls. Just gotta give you an overview. We're broken up into four different divisions, we have, there are people sitting listed up there, Frank Franco's in charge of our administrative staff, Captain Baldwin's in charge of our criminal investigation as the detectives, patrol division, which people wear a uniform like I'm wearing here tonight, is Captain Ramus, and our support services is Captain Wager. Ramus, and our support services is Captain Wager. I shouldn't invite you to, we probably don't have time to go over this. I'm going to give you, but this is a perspective. If you're more interested, as I get more of this information to you, it's probably hard to read from where you're at. I don't think we have time to get into that much detail here. But it does give you a little perspective. Column on the left, two thousand and fifteen, is halfway through. That's what we'll be doing, the statistics, probably in the next month or so, for the next budget cycle, which starts in a couple months. It seems like it runs all year round, we do the budget. But we'll have those stats completed there. But just to give you a kind of a perspective, how many entries we have, like in CAD, the top one there, CAD entry, that's computer-aided dispatch, about sixty-seven thousand calls per year. About ninety percent of our activity in dispatch center is police, and about ten percent of our activity in our dispatch center is fire and EMS. So most of the activity in our dispatch center is police. You may be one of those people in this column right there. Traffic citations. We do hand out a lot of citations per year, and our argument is, and it shows, is the more tickets we write, the more traffic enforcement we do, the less traffic crashes we have. If people think they're going to drive however they feel like in a city and however fast they want, we have a lot more traffic crashes. This is the other part. I put a few slides together today for, I anticipate this question might be coming, and it's going to be a discussed after the study is done. Alderman Perry mentioned that they're doing a study, a company out of California is doing a study right now, and it'll go in front of county council somewhere around, probably June-ish. It'll be done in May. But I wanted to just take an opportunity to discuss a few things in here. And I, this is obviously, there's a lot more information that'd be in the study. It'll be on our page, it'll be on the city page, it'll be, it'll be very well-publicized, so I encourage you to read that study as it comes out, and then show up at council and give your opinion. Unless you don't want to go, then don't show up. Just kidding. I want, I want everybody to have a voice, and, because it is your tax dollars. And I was asked going, what are the benefits of staying here and, or what are the costs? I don't know the costs yet. That's what the study is going to determine. But that's the only advantage you go into the county is cost. It will save us taxes, I can guarantee that. When you outsource something, it does save you money. But I'm just going to go over just a few things of why I think I do as a police chief. I have argued since I did chief before, and I remain to that today, that we need to keep our dispatch center. We should not outsource our dispatch center. And that's the top five reasons up there. I'll go over each of those in a little bit, just a little bit more detail. And these are coming from your chief of police. Number one is officer safety. Our dispatchers go through roll calls, they go through, read reports, they know the voices of our officers, they know them inside and out, very much. They're familiar with the city streets and landmarks. When our cop calls on Old Lot Twelve, our dispatchers know exactly where that is. If we outsource it to the county, they have no clue where Old Lot Twelve is. They don't understand that concept. All dispatchers sit in the same room. They're sitting right probably between Dan, myself, and Alderman Piper up here. That's about the area they sit. So we have a police dispatcher, a fire dispatcher, and a call table. And they sit right in close proximity, communicate to both the entire ship together, and they handle those. And I know we're not, we're not Milwaukee, where you have homicides every day in the news. But since I've been chief, in the six and a half years, we've had four officer involved shootings. And that means my officers are discharging their firearms in the line of duty. Those are serious calls. We've had three homicides last year. We have about one a year normally. But even more so is when those cops call on the radio, and they call on the radio for help, shots fired, fifty-nine in the, or Broadway in the bypass. They need somebody who knows exactly where that is, answering that call, and sending them resources. They don't need somebody going, bypass, you mean eight ninety-four? Do you mean fifty-nine? Do you mean one sixty-four? Do you mean East Broadway, West Broadway? Put yourself in that situation. The bullets are flying. Do you want to answer questions if the dispatcher has no idea who you are? Or do you want that dispatcher sending you a whole bunch of help? Big difference between those two. Customer service, somebody had mentioned earlier about the automation. We have no automation, no phone trees. Focus very much on customer service. Extremely want customer service. I have, as chief, have control over how my dispatches operate. If I wanted to operate a certain way, I put out a written order, they're all trained, and it's done. The dispatcher's exactly how I tell them. They answer the phone how I tell them, and they deliver the service that I tell them. If we outsource, you know, everybody's familiar with that term. What happens when you outsource? Who controls that? The company, right? But it's a little different for dispatch. If we out, if you outsource to your phone company, or wherever you outsource, customer service, what happens if you're not happy with that company? What do you do? You go switch, right? There is another switch. There's no going back. There's no switching. That is your company you have.
Right.
Right. Our dispatchers know our department, they read the reports, they go to roll calls like I mentioned, they go to, they constantly information, give information to officers based on their knowledge. WCC, obviously, Waukesha County Communication doesn't have any knowledge of our reports or fire calls. Future costs are an issue. Nobody likes to pay more taxes, Alderman Perry addressed earlier. It is cheaper. The study will show it's cheaper to outsource to the Waukesha County Communication Center. However, there's no control over future costs. If you don't have the ability to leave, there's no way you can control what the costs are. None. Level of service, I'm going to go over here, it's going to really highlight what the level of service is. Because as we just started this study, we had a kickoff meeting, somebody mentioned, if it's not a higher level of service, why aren't we looking at this? Why did we spend sixty-seven thousand dollars to do a study, even somebody mentioned? And you're looking at the list here, and there's a long list of things that aren't, CWCC is City of Waukesha Communication Center, and WCC is Waukesha County Communication Center. That's where it's being considered, if we should outsource there. Here's the, here's the list here. There's a lot of things, I'm not going, we don't have time to go over each one of these things that they do. But both centers do the first five. They receive calls from citizens when you call. They send squads, they send fire, they send EMS, they do license plates. If you want to check a license plate, check a driver's license, they do that. They provide some information to citizens, not much, you're going to see, both of them provide information. And the alert center is a electronic system to call people back. So if we need to SWAT T D in, or we need to do mass notification, it's an electronic system. And then we'll go through everything else real briefly. Six through twenty-seven, I think, in there. The left column is all the things that we do, and on the right is WCC, the Waukesha County, where it's being considered outsourced to. Those are all the things they don't do. Number eight's a big one there. Camera systems. Camera systems are all over the city, they're monitoring our dispatch center. They have lots of big screens in our dispatch center. Continue on the list, you can just read on it, read those through. Some of you may not understand, I'm not trying to explain everything in here. But it's pretty obvious, when you look at the list, there's nothing over here. Screen one, there was only half of it. Screen two, there's zero. Screen three, there's nothing listed over here. Screen four, nothing listed over here. So if anybody ever tells you, you get the same level of service or better, please direct them to slides, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-two, whatever they are, I don't know. Direct them to these slides. Don't let anybody tell you that it's the same level of service or better. It's not. I don't want to go kind of fast, but I don't want to, I don't want to spend too much time on those. I don't want Dan pulling me offstage here. But that's, that's the dispatch part. Well, I'll take a few questions in a minute, but I want to, I share this quote a lot. I hate to admit this, in this room, you're in Milwaukee, Waukesha, you're so close to Green Bay in Milwaukee, but I'm a Minnesota Vikings fan. But I'm also Aron. Keep that in mind, please. Multiple levels. But I am a Minnesota Viking fan, but I'm an absolute fan of Vince Lombardi. I really am. Not the Packers. That Brett Favre guy, yeah. But Vince Lombardi was one of the greatest leaders there. He was a football coach, but he was a great leader, really, really was. And there's quite a few different versions out there, this phrase out there. But we lived this at the Waukesha Police Department. I've lived this forever. If you set that bar too low, that's where your employees will be. If you set it for yourself too low, that's where you perform bad. Nobody's perfect. Nobody is. But your goal has to be perfection, according to Vince, and I agree with him, and along the way you'll achieve excellence. The higher that bar is, the more you'll achieve. Vince Lombardi himself. That's the only part of the Packers headline here. So, couple of questions. Anybody have questions?
I guess, just a comment. Your slideshow kind of convinced me that joint dispatch is the wrong idea. I'm with you that, I support that. I would challenge you, however, on the dispatchers. My wife and I, and Alderman Perry, you might recall, we're new to the area, and on our dead-end road, we've been having some issues with dogs off-leashings. And I know when that call comes in, you know, it's probably pretty low on the priority list, obviously, it gets more important.
We do have the priority.
I, I get that. However, the, the tone and the perception that we've been getting from the dispatch has not always reflected the way that you're presenting it to us. So I would just, just providing some feedback on, from our end, it's not necessarily very fair, and I think there's probably some room to improve there.
I'm sure there is. I, I can't, I can't stand here doing that. I will not, in this study, compare the individual dispatchers to each other. I don't know the county dispatchers. I'm sure they have great people over there. I'm sure some of them are rude or abrupt people at some times, too. I'm sure they're very, very similar to our dispatch center. Sometimes people have a bad day, they don't take it serious, they're too busy, whatever the case may be, they really are. So I'm not comparing a City of Waukesha dispatch person to the City of, excuse me, Waukesha County dispatch person. Do we have better dispatchers than they do? I'm not comparing that. And none, none of my slides reflected that at all. I'm just comparing the level of service, because I don't have time, energy, or anything else to go compare their dispatcher versus ours. I think we do have great dispatchers. Do they, is everybody completely satisfied with their walkout? No. And obviously, you're not. But what I will tell you is, if you're not, we need to know about it. Everything's recorded. Everything they say to you on the phone or on the radio is recorded. And as soon as somebody calls back, what do we do? Listen to it, right? We save those records for a minimum of a hundred and twenty days. We have to by law. And so we'll go back and listen to that, and we have addressed issues, absolutely. We've addressed issues with somebody being too short with a citizen, not answering their full question, not listening correctly. Absolutely, we've addressed those. I can't stand here if they have perfect employees. But I can tell you, the number four priority is accountability. Everyone is held accountable. And I'm sure they have discipline problems at WCC. Actually, I know they do, but I'm not going to get into comparing the two different dispatch centers. So that's not what my PowerPoint was designed to do. But if you do have issues, I would like to talk to you offline afterwards, because that's how you get better. And guess what? When you hold one employee accountable, what do the other employees do? They improve. We've done that for a while. They don't get perfect. They don't. But they do improve. If they know supervisors are watching, listening, or holding them accountable, everybody gets better, whether you're a cop, firefighter, an attorney, a banker, or, huh, a fiduciary, or whatever you are. No matter what you do, an IT guy, or whatever you do, if your boss is watching and listening and holding you accountable, you perform better. And that's what our belief is. Doesn't, that doesn't mean we're perfect, but we'll get better.
Last year, I had called nine-one-one for the first time last summer, and I think it was crossing, and I got sent to the county, mistaken. And one of your things here about, they know where I was calling from, already asked me, but my problem was, I told her, where are you calling from? And I told her, and she said, well, I don't understand why we got your call.
Were you on a cell phone or landline?
My landline, which we found out.
Oh, you, you talked about that.
Yeah.
We did look at it, there's.
Yeah, the next day, I did get a call from one of your officers. We looked and found out that the Tine Water people did not ship to yours, and your, your guys were so helpful.
I remember talking about.
And then they said, would you please call after like four o'clock in the afternoon? We're going to make the ship to make sure that, you know, I was getting ready to sleep. Very helpful and very cooperative, and I highly commend yous for stopping on doing that.
And that adds on to what his question was. People aren't perfect, neither is technology. But we'll fix it. You know, if we know about something, we're going to fix it. You know, whether it's somebody being short on the phone, whether it's a technology problem, we will fix those problems. Technology's not perfect. We have some great IT guys who are in the room here, but they're not, technology's not perfect.
That kind of adds into a follow-up on that question. How do we know, with all of us having voice connections these days and all that stuff, that it is going to the right place? And that the infrastructure of using where our phones has done what they need to do before we have emergencies?
Yeah, there is no guarantee. It's usually, we've had a couple of cases like Ron's in the past here, in the City of Waukesha. Usually, it's like right on the border, you know, it's like, so if you live on the border, we have tested those. We tested his after they fixed it. If you live in downtown Waukesha, it's going, it's the middle of the city, there's no issue there. But the people in this room, a lot of us live on the outskirts of town. Soon as you drive down the center of the road, whoop, you're out of the city. You know how you tell you're out of the city? The roads get really, really bumpy, don't they? He talked about road construction. Soon that you know you're out of the city, when it turns to southwest numbers and the road starts getting really bumpy. And so we might have issues with potholes here, but it's a lot better down the county. But the, the answer to your question, so if you're concerned about it, I want you to call the dispatch center, not nine-one-one. Don't call nine-one-one and go, hey, this worked, you got me. But we do test that on a regular basis, if people are concerned that they may or may not be getting to our dispatch center in a timely fashion. If you do get WCC, then they'll transfer it over to us. And unfortunately, if you call on your nine on a cell phone, that's why I asked about the landline or cell phone, I forgot about that, they mentioned a little more details. If you call on a cell phone, it automatically goes to WCC, Waukesha County Communication. They answer all nine-one-one calls cellular. If it's a landline, it's supposed to go directly to our dispatch center, so there's no delay. We try to get our cell phone call, they won't give it to us. They refuse to give us our cell phone. We want those to come to the city. The towers in the city that are all City of Waukesha, we really should have those, but for right now, they go all, all, everything from a cell phone goes to the county. But if you're, there's a short delay then.
How can we stop that? How, wouldn't we use the.
We can't. We've tried everything, Mistigal's tried everything, they tried all legal processes, they don't have to give it to us. And we have all data. Every great call is towered with city of Waukesha.
So does that kind of delay us if we recall 911 from our home and went to county and then Alderman Perry said that it was a seven minutes, seven minutes to our neighborhood? So we could be 14, 15 minutes outside of.
No, not to that level, not to a seven or seven minutes. They take a brief amount of information, figure out the city of Waukesha, and get a little bit of information transferred over to us. But seconds matter. If there's a guy pounding your door with a knife or a gun in his hand, any delay is not okay. But we can't do anything about it. There's nothing we can do.
Help emergencies and.
Yeah, we can't force them to do every, lots of pieces to try.
Is there something that can be done in a more global, people sitting in here just said, "Yeah, call the staff." That's how many people here compared to the city. And, you know, whole neighborhoods like Rubens Crossing are getting routed the wrong way. There's got to be a more global way that we can attack this so that we don't have to worry about it, that it doesn't happen.
I'm not a technology guy, I'm just a police chief, but I will look into that though, because I personally don't have the answer. Like Aaron said, he doesn't know all the answers either, I don't either. I'm not a technology guy, but I will look into that.
Switching gears a little bit, with all of the bomb threat stuff that's been going on in West Dallas, how does Waukesha respond to that? Do we have our own bomb squad or do we use Milwaukee, that kind of thing?
Yes, we use Milwaukee. When you talk major services like that, we don't have a dive team, we don't have a bomb squad, we don't have those big things, because in certain areas, certain things consolidation is very, very good. You know, every department doesn't need their own bomb squad, every department doesn't need those kind of things. We do work together, last time we did this, 29 different things we consolidate on other agencies, whether it be the federal government, county government, or state government. So things like that, we don't, we just call them in, because they're way too expensive to have for each city. We don't have a dive team and those kind of things. We use the sheriff's department. We work hand in hand with the sheriff's department every single day. And for those big things that should be regionalized, they are regionalized. Milwaukee PD has a bomb squad and Milwaukee County Sheriff has a bomb squad. So we have access to them when we need them. So the way we handle it, it's just like West Dallas. The decision to evacuate is on the business where the bomb is, bomb threat. We make recommendations based on our professional experience. We'll help them search, we'll do all those things. But the actual decision is made by the business, in this case the schools, with our advice. Because they're absolutely responsible for it, for the decision that they have. So we definitely work with them and we search it with them. Because who knows what's supposed to be in a business, the cop or the janitor? The janitor, right? If we don't go get the CEO, the CEO has no idea what's in the business, the basement floor. The janitor does. The janitor knows where everything, if that box is supposed to be there, not supposed to be there, or that bag was there yesterday or not. I am a CEO, CEO, so I get that, I don't know everything in my station. I'd go to my janitor or some patrol officer, somebody in the station or maybe a janitor or something like that, to find out what's supposed to be.
Real quick, it's okay, we're going to take one more and then save some time at the end. We'll do some more questions, but I want to make sure we, we're behind a little bit now, so I want to make sure we get to Dan's presentation on time as well.
Since they're interested citizens, can you tell a little bit about the Police Academy?
A citizens' police academy?
Right. Some of these people might not know about it.
I'll make a shameless plug, a shameless, Facebook shameless plug. I'll end with a shameless plug for our citizens' police academy. What the citizens' police academy is, is we've run 29 sessions. It's an opportunity for us, bring citizens in, 24 about at a time, and we bring you in for 10 weeks. And then 11th week is a kind of celebration, kind of a debriefing of this. So 11 weeks of your time and bring you in for, tell you everything from how the SWAT team works, how our drug unit works, how the use of force is, get an opportunity to get tased if you choose to. Cause the nerves before, obviously have a taser on. It's a short five seconds. But we bring you in and do everything we can to show you what it's like to be a cop for 11 weeks. The ultimate transparency, you get a ride along, you see all these presentations, you get to shoot a firearm, we do the whole nine yards. And so I really encourage you, if you're interested in that, or if you know somebody that is, my information's always on the web. Just go to the city of Waukesha website, police department, there's my information. Shoot me an email, give me a phone call. Very, very good opportunity, an ultimate transparency. Last thing I have before I get the hook here. The other transparency we have is every morning, at 6:00 in the morning, we send out to every media source, right Matt? Every media source, every call we did for the last 24 hours. Not which ones we want to send them. We send every single call to 32 media locations in Waukesha and Milwaukee area. That's the ultimate transparency. I don't get to filter them, they go with everybody. Here's exactly what we did in the last 24 hours, good, bad, or otherwise. So we truly believe in ultimate transparency.
Didn't the previous Freeman reporters ever hire to take the P A academy?
Remember, a head in or not. Make this a real comment. You get your nickels worth coming to this talk.
Great, thank you chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I wanted to try to stay on time as much as possible and absolutely not shortchange this next presentation, because even the chief would agree, this is the most important issue of Waukesha, it has been for a long time. And the next few months, as he's going to explain, kind of down to decision time after all this work's been done. We've had a lot of people in town, recently we had some meetings and some opportunity to testify, which I went and testified on behalf of District 12, an honor to do so. And interesting to hear some of the special interest groups come and speak as well. What I wanted to make clear to the people who are going to be making these decisions are, the people you should be listening to, the people who live here, will drink this water, will pay for this water, and that's us. And I have all the faith in the world in Damon that we put together, so hope you take off.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out, hard to follow that. I could tell you a lot of Minnesota biking jokes, but I won't go there. Again, my name is Daniel Kian, I'm the general manager of the Waukesha County Department. I've been general manager, I'm in my 14th year here. I basically came here because of the water issue. One of the reasons I came here was to address the water issue. Had no idea we were going to be applying for great placed water when I came here. However, we're going down that path right now. Before I was here for 14 years, I was in the City of Oak Creek for nine years. I worked at the Water and Waste Water Utility in the City of Oak Creek. Before that, I was in the City of Francine for four years. I worked at their Water and Waste Water Utility for three years. And I worked at their city for two years. And before that, I was in the City of Francine for two years. So I actually have a lot of experience within the area, I mean, going through, negotiating with. Kind of an interesting tidbit, when we were negotiating with the city, they brought my old boss back to negotiate with us, so I stand in his stead. We were going down through that. But, you know, and I don't have to go through this, but this is kind of just some of the statistics we put out about the city of Waukesha. I find it interesting that some of our opponents like to, and the last video that I saw from our opponents, they opened up with a huge house on North Lake saying, "This is Waukesha." You know, and it's like, whoa, where is that in Waukesha? I don't remember seeing that in the city. I don't think Police Chief Jack is ever inspired to recall from on that house. So it's kind of interesting how they like to portray us as that. But yeah, we talked about some of the nonprofit land that's on our, or the non-tax land. It's interesting, because we do house, we do house the county services. I don't believe they have to tax the county, but we have all the county services here located in the city. We have our own transit system, we have established corporate emergency systems. We have a really good city here that has some affordable housing, the demographics are changing. What another thing that a lot of our opponents like to do a lot, is they like to take the average income for the city and they like to compare like our average income in Waukesha County versus the average income in the city of Milwaukee or something like that. And it's not really comparing the apples to apples, but they like to do that a lot. So let me throw some of these statistics up here. So, just kind of interesting to kind of compare our city to others. Our current water source, we have seven deep aquifer wells, three of them have radium treatment. We have one that's right up the block by West High School, that actually has radium treatment and it takes water from the shallow wells and blends it. We have three shallow wells, the two there, and then there's one in Angler, we call it the Angler well on the Old Angler property. We have, again, the three shallow wells. One of the issues we have had recently with shallow wells, and we're learning this more and more as Flint, Michigan made us very aware of it, is that chlorides in wells can be a problem. And the standard, the secondary standard for chlorides was always basically for aesthetic purposes. 250 milligrams per liter, if you got above that, that's what you were concerned about, or that's what made you aware. In Flint, Michigan, the problem happened when they were at around 80 to 90 milligrams per liter. And what that basically did is it put a more of a corrosive water into their system and it caused lead from the solder on your copper pipes and from your fixtures to leach into the water and caused lead problems. Well, lo and behold, we've been monitoring the chlorides in our shallow wells since we put them online back in 2006. But again, Flint came around, made us aware. Our shallow wells, all of a sudden, last, about a month ago, were putting out water that was about 320 milligrams per liter of chlorides. And unfortunately, our deep aquifer well was down at that time, so we weren't blending it down or anything. But they took to get the chloride levels down, so we made the decision to turn that water off. So we turned that water off. So for somebody that tells you that shallow wells are the answer, I can tell you, the water quality in the shallow wells sucks. And that's just putting it forward. We've had a number of residents in the town that have brought samples in and look for chloride levels in their private wells. Some of them have approached 400 milligrams per liter. So private wells within the town. So town resident, you know, some townsfolk testified that, no, we don't have problems in the town, we have enough water. Well, you may not know the entire story of all your water. Nobody in Jackson, Wisconsin, thought they were going to have a problem with their water supply and then there was a leak in the gas pipeline that was going through their city. So there's a lot of things that can happen and I think water has just become more and more important. How did we get to this point? This is kind of an interesting series of slides. We'll go through the pre-development until through today. And what'll happen is there's two maps here. On the right-hand side is Milwaukee, Milwaukee County, Waukesha County, basically southeast of Wisconsin. And then the left-hand side is the water elevations in the aquifer. And then there's this line right here, this gray line that comes through. That's the edge of a thick shale layer that exists all in southeastern Wisconsin. That's about 200 feet down, that prevents water from naturally percolating through the soil and recharging the deep aquifer. So we get water from the deep aquifer, but the surface water can't recharge the deep aquifer because there's a thick layer of shale that's there. So that's kind of a unique geological feature that exists in southeastern Wisconsin that goes from northeastern Illinois, southeastern Wisconsin, all the way up to Green Bay. So when we talk about the uniqueness of our application, this is one of the unique features. This does not exist around the entire Great Lakes basin. The other thing that makes it interesting, and we'll get into this a little bit, but the groundwater that is underneath here in the deep aquifer is actually tributary to Great Lakes. It was actually flowing towards Great Lakes at one point. Now because of the drawdown in the aquifer, it's flowing towards that corner depression. So here we are, we'll kind of go through this, we'll go through this a little bit, and it kind of goes through automatically. But you'll travel through time and you'll see some wells pop up in Milwaukee County as Milwaukee County started to grow in the early 1900s, more and more wells are going in. And you'll see the drawdown in the corner depression starts to form around 1930, Milwaukee's still using well water. And around 1950s, Milwaukee switches from well water to lake water, but Waukesha starts developing. And then you see that corner depression in the 70s, kind of shift out towards Waukesha County as Milwaukee's getting hot and Waukesha's developing to where it exists today, right underneath, centered underneath the city of Waukesha. And it is the largest area of groundwater drawdown in North America, yes.
Where in the map is the line between the two basins?
Excellent point. That's coming up in the next, I couldn't fit it in here because this is a slipback slide and it's coming up. But basically cuts through Waukesha County, comes into the rest of the county, and actually comes close to the lake. And in Chicago, in Illinois, it's actually less than a block from the lake. So all of Illinois, all of the Chicago area is outside of the basin. However, Illinois is special in the compact, they divert 2.1 billion gallons a day, yes, that's billion in the B, and they don't return the same drawdown. It goes down the Chicago Santeria Canal, down to the Mississippi River and it's lost forever. So they have that under a 100-year-old Supreme Court decree where there is an outbreak, a health issue in Chicago in the early 1900s. And what they needed to do was basically flush the Chicago Santeria Canal. So they reversed the flow in the Chicago Santeria Canal to flush everything down, everything down towards the Mississippi and that diversion still exists today. So they are allowed to divert the 2.1 billion gallons a day. Put that into perspective, we're asking for 10.1 million gallons a day and we're going to return every single drop. So it sounds like a lot of water, 10.1 million gallons a day. It is a lot of water, but it's about a 36-inch to 42-inch pipe of water. So that's where we are today, we have this huge drawdown. Interestingly enough, one of our opponents was just, as he quoted in the paper, two days ago, saying that this aquifer is depleted and it's the worst aquifer, or it has the worst drawdown in North America. And then today he's in the paper saying, "We should just tap that aquifer and use that to continue, put more wells in it and continue to use that source for our water supply." And to me, it just doesn't make sense when you look through that. So here we are in southeastern Wisconsin, we have this drawdown. Yes, there has been recharge over the last, from 2000 to 2010. New Berlin got out the aquifer. With the radium compliance issues, a lot of communities were switching some of their source to shallow aquifer. So they would blend that water together, so they were getting off, some of their water off the deep aquifer and going into shallow aquifer to blend that. So there was some rebounding in the deep aquifer. In the last five years, we've seen the downward trend go back again. So we had a rebound of about around 80, 200 feet and now we're back on the downward trend. The phenomenon of the rebound and a downward trend is not new. In Chicago, in the Illinois area, there's a community a year that gets off the deep aquifer. If you are on the deep aquifer, it is an automatic allocation from the state if you get off the deep aquifer. You can switch to Great Lakes water. So they've had this phenomenon where they had 200 feet of recovery in the deep aquifer and everyone thought they were going to be fine. Lo and behold, 20 years later, they're down another 400 feet. Up in the Green Bay area, interesting thing happened. The city of Green Bay decided that they were going to go to the Great Lakes for water because there was a drawdown in the deep aquifer, back in around 1950, 1960. They went, all the surrounding communities and said, "We're going to go for Great Lakes water." Everybody said, "We're in, we're in, we're in." Green Bay said, "Okay, we're letting the contract." They went. All the surrounding communities said, "Well, if Green Bay gets off, we'll save plenty of water for us, so we don't need to go." So they all backed out, but Green Bay still went. Fast forward 50 years, that aquifer is down again, radium problems. They go knocking on Green Bay's door and Green Bay says, "Well, now you're going to pay." Because now you have to pay for everything that you didn't pay for in the beginning. They couldn't come into an agreement, so what happened? Green Bay built their second line to the Great Lakes and they don't go into the bay, they go out into the lake itself. And the surrounding communities built a $200 million project and went to manage it, walked about their water to manage one, because they couldn't get along. So, but anyway, that just tells you, we've seen this before. We've seen the aquifer rebound, we've seen it go back down, we know what's going to happen. So here we are from a side view. And here's looking at a slice of land. You see waters naturally flowing towards the Great Lakes and underneath the Great Lakes. And here's that groundwater divide. And here's the surface water divide. And the city of Waukesha is putting wells in, they have some shallow wells, but they have the deep aquifer wells. So when you have that drawdown that exists, though, that water starts to flow towards the deep aquifer wells, this groundwater divide actually moves west, which is one of the reasons under the compact that they did not use the groundwater divide as the line. It was because that line, the groundwater divide actually moves because of the drawdown and water starting to flow towards that corner of depression. If they had used that groundwater divide, we would not be sitting here today because we would have to apply. But now you're given substantial consideration if you are in the groundwater, in the groundwater divide. So if you think about the Great Lakes basin as a bowl of water, or as a bowl, if you're within that bowl, you're in the surface water divide. So all the rain that falls into that bowl is going into the Great Lakes. If you're outside of that bowl, the rain that falls isn't going into that bowl. But the groundwater divide is actually a bigger bowl that's underneath it. And so we are within that groundwater divide and that groundwater flows towards Lake Michigan and flows under into Lake Michigan. So I've heard an opponent of ours say, "Well, it's like, the Great Lakes are like an egg and if you crack that egg, once you crack that egg, it's going to break." And I completely agree with that. I completely agree with that. And we're not looking to break that egg, because we're allowed to apply for it under the compact. So what I say is, inside the Great Lakes basin is the egg yolk and we're in that egg whitey area. So we're not breaking the shell, because if you break the shell, you already have eaten the egg. But we're within that egg, so we should be able to apply and we should be able to get the water. So why do we need a new water supply? Our deep groundwater levels have declined. And again, this up in the upper right-hand corner, that red is that thick layer of shale. The other issue, before I get into this, the other issue with the shallow aquifer is that when you take water from the shallow aquifer, the impacts are a lot more localized. So they're, like on the deep aquifer, the impacts are spread out throughout the entire region. So right now, throughout the entire region, because that thick layer of shale isn't impermeable, there still is some water that gets through. So about 18% of the water that is normally discharged to local rivers and streams within the Great Lakes basin is now going to that deep aquifer. Okay, so there's less water that's going to the local rivers and streams in all of southeastern Wisconsin. And the USGS has also concluded that about 3 million gallons a day that we're pulling from the deep aquifer is actually Lake Michigan water and we're pumping it and we're already diverting it to the Mississippi and it's lost forever. So, one of our arguments is, with us moving off the deep aquifer, we're starting that trend of reversing that flow pattern and starting that recharge of the deep aquifer to get that flow going towards the Great Lakes. So, at the deep aquifer, the groundwater quality is getting worse. You know, we all know about the radium. And if this was just about radium, we wouldn't be here. We can treat and remove radium. There's no surprise to that. Everyone knows that. We can remove radium. This isn't about radium. We've had, the total dissolved solids goes up in that deep aquifer wells. What does that mean? As you get further down in the aquifer, the aquifer becomes brackish water. It becomes saltwater. So, what do you have to do when it becomes saltwater? You have to put in reverse osmosis technology, a membrane technology. And what happens there? You have to pump 20% more water to treat the same volume because you lose that much water in that treatment process. Because you're pulling all that salt out of the water. You've got to pull that salt out of the water. So, when you have high total dissolved solids when you get there, you have to pump that much more. If our conservation goal is only 10%, which is a really aggressive conservation program, and we can only save 10% with our conservation program, if we have to go to reverse osmosis, we've just lost all of our savings from the conservation program and then some. So, there is problems. Several wells are no longer usable. We've had to abandon wells because the total dissolved solids have gone up. We've pulled water that's been 98 degrees Fahrenheit out of our wells. We've had formations collapse where, if you go up to the Dallas, you see the sandstone. Well, sometimes that breaks off. We've had wells collapse. We've pumped, we've been, one of our radium trickle wells, we've actually pumped sand because that collapsed right below our well. And we didn't know that that was happening until all of a sudden, we saw some sand in one of our reservoirs, and we were like, "Where's that coming from?" And we opened up our filter and we saw the sand from the formation. So, then we had to rebuild the filters and rebuild the pump. So, there's several wells that are no longer usable. The deep aquifer is not sustainable due to that limited recharging. Once you get down further, there's plenty of water there. There's a ton of water there. It's just not usable. So, then we go to the shallow wells, and we look at the shallow wells. And like I said, we've, the impacts are a lot more localized, but it's not just that. We've seen arsenic in there. We've seen the chloride issues. And when, unfortunately, here in the city of Waukesha, we don't have any shallow well within the city limits. So, the only shallow well water that's available to us is just south of us, and it just so happens to be adjacent to the Vernon Marsh. So, when you look at that and you do the modeling, you see the impacts we have. And because we have two existing shallow wells, we know what happens. With our two existing wells, we watch that drawdown so we don't draw it down more than a foot because if we do, we know we're going to have impacts. What happens? As we pump those wells more and more, if we pump those wells out for three days, we start losing capacity because we can't pump down so much. So, then after, we're after three days of pumping hard, we lose 30% of our capacity out of those wells. When's the most, when's the time that you need the most water? In the summer months, when it's dry, when people want to water their gardens or water their plants. That's when they're using the water. That's when we can't get the water out of the shallow aquifer because we'll have impacts. And the DNR has looked at that, and they said, "We'll have about 900 to 1,000 acres of wetlands that'll be negatively impacted as a result if we go to the shallow wells." And again, we talked about conservation. Even with conservation, we won't be able to abandon our need for new water supply. So, where, again, why can we apply? Well, here's the Great Lakes basin at the top. And we're not within that Great Lakes basin, but we are just adjacent to it. And the compact that was put back in place back in 2008 strictly banned water from going outside that basin with two exceptions. One being a community that straddles the divide, so a community who's on both sides of that line. And/or two, a community that is in a straddling county or a county that straddles that divide. Water cannot go outside of this line of the straddling counties. That is an absolute law. There is, water will never go to California. It will never go to Arizona. It will never go to Dane County. It can't because it would be against the law. A lot of our opponents like to say, "Well, if you give Waukesha water, the next person coming is California." And that is absolutely not true. That is completely factually wrong statement because it can't flow that far. The only way it can go is a community in a straddling county or a straddling community. And a lot of people call the community in a straddling county the Waukesha exception because we were involved in those negotiations. We were involved in the negotiations of the compact. We weren't sitting at the table. If everyone at Glaze that was sitting at the table was actually at the table, we'd have one huge table. There was actually only about eight people or 10 people in the room. But we were being, we were being asked about what we thought, about what we could live with and what we couldn't live with because everyone was concerned about Waukesha. And Sewer Path had done a regional planning supply that said we should apply for Great Lakes water. So, what's the process? And first, you have to determine if you're without adequate supplies of water. Then you see if you have a reasonable supply alternative in the Mississippi River basin or in another basin. You look at a water supply service area, and then you figure out the amount of water you need for that. You subtract conservation. You analyze the return flow impacts. And then you analyze the impacts on the Great Lakes basin diversion. And the DNR took five years to go through this. We had 22 additional technical memoranda that were added to our application as a result of their thorough review. And it's interesting, we'll get into them in a minute, but when another group put out their alternative, the DNR put theirs through the same scrutiny and they hold up. So, without adequate supplies of water, that was an easy one. We're under a court order to come into compliance with this radium standard. The water demand of the current system, because we are under this interim compliance, we cannot provide radium-free water to all of our customers for our maximum demand day with our largest pump out of water. With our largest pump out of service. That's the criteria that they use. You have to be able to supply your max day with your largest facility out of service. And we are well short of what we would need. So, we need a new water supply. And with our current supply, we cannot need that. And the deep aquifer is severely depleted. So, I sometimes like to use the analogy of an old car where the engine and the transmission go. You know, it's going to cost you $10,000, $15,000 to put in a new engine and a new transmission, or you can put that money towards a new car and get a better, and have a better alternative for you more reliable. And that's what we want to do. We want to go off our old reliable, or our old source and go to the most reliable source and develop that new water supply. These are all the water supply alternatives that we looked at. A lot of people say, "Did you look at this? Did you look at this?" Yes, we looked at pretty much everything. We've exhausted all of the alternatives. We looked at the shallow aquifer. There's another dolomite aquifer that we looked at. We looked at the porches. That was a thing under some previous leadership. Everyone thought we could use, people thought we could use the porches. We looked at wells in western Waukesha County, which would be outside of where that shale layer is. And we looked at river water, lake water, and we looked at different, using the deep aquifer wells and different combinations of shallow aquifer wells. We looked at combinations of different alternatives. One thing I will tell you as a manager of a water utility, you don't want to have any more than two sources of water. And I will tell you that because it's almost impossible then to give you guys consistent water quality throughout the city. It's very difficult. And that's when you start to run into problems like a Flint, Michigan, when you introduce different water chemistries. That's when you start to run into problems. And that corrosion problem is when you start introducing different water qualities into your system. So, we did look at a number of different water supplies, and they were all eliminated for various reasons. None of them were eliminated for cost. They were all considered equal in cost. And that's important because everyone, a lot of people say, "Well, the rates are going to go up." And yes, the rates are going to go up. Unfortunately, that's just, that's the nature of the business, or the nature of the beast, I should say. The costs are going to go up because we have to deal with it. But the costs would go up the same under any alternative. And I will tell you, I had a number of calls over the last couple of days specifically about rates. Were saying that they're going to double, at least double, and potentially triple. One thing I will tell you is, on your water bill, it's half sewer, half water. So, you pay right now about $30 a month for water. We're saying that it's going to go to $60 a month, potentially $90 a month. One thing I will tell you about Great Lakes water, having gone through this with my parents at their house, they switched from deep aquifer groundwater to lake water. They did eliminate their water softener and got rid of all that, all the infrastructure that was associated with that through their home. So, they saved about $30 a month getting rid of their water softener. Now, that's not to say everybody's going to get rid of their water softener because that's up to everyone else. But I will tell you, you don't necessarily need a water softener with lake water. It is pretty soft water. The other thing that's really nice is you'll see your appliances will last a lot longer. Your hot water heater will last a lot longer. Your dishwasher will last a lot longer. Your washing machine will last a lot longer. So, you'll start seeing the maintenance on those appliances go down also. So, there are some benefits to getting, to switching to Great Lakes water. But these were eliminated for a number of reasons. Most of them environmental impacts associated with it. So, we went through, we looked at the different water supply sources. We screened down to six. We went through an in-depth analysis of six alternatives. And the DNR, again, over five years, the DNR came up with the conclusions consistent with ours that Great Lakes is the only reasonable alternative. Sewer Path, a completely separate entity, also did a study over five years. Had 32 panel, 32 panel experts throughout the region. That included environmentalists, academia, regulators, water system operators. And they recommended unanimously that Waukesha go for Great Lakes water. The actual recommendation out of that study would have been, everyone in eastern Waukesha County should go for Great Lakes water, but they knew that there wasn't the political wherewithal to make that happen. But Waukesha was recommended to go for Great Lakes water. So, here's the project overall. We have the service area that gets water. The blue line is the line that will bring water from Oak Creek to Waukesha. And then the green line is the return flow pipeline that will discharge to the Root River. Where it'll travel down through the Root River and discharge into the Root River. We actually switched to the Root River as our discharge location at the request of the DNR. The Root River, they have been looking for ways to augment flow in the Root River since the late 50s. Because of the urbanization of the area, they weren't receiving the base flow in the Root River. So, they've been looking for ways to augment flow in there. And this is a way that they can accomplish it, but it was always cost for everything. This is a way they could accomplish that without having to spend the money on it. In fact, when I was talking to my old boss at Franklin, they had a plan. He showed me, he pulled out of all the land they were going to acquire to make a huge lake that would ultimately be able to be pumped into the Root River to augment that flow. So, there was some plans, there's a lot of studies that have done to look at that. And why is that important? Because downstream in Racine, there's a fishery. And that fishery, with the lack of flow that exists in the Root River, the fish, the trout and the salmon, they can go upstream to that fishery where they harvest the eggs and increase the number of fish in the Great Lakes basin in this area. The DNR actually wrote a memo, their fisheries guys wrote a memo, and said, "If we can get the additional flow from Waukesha down here, we could add about 10,000 additional angling hours to this area and provide a number of, larger number of fish to the Great Lakes in this region." So, there's a huge benefit. A lot of the sports fishing groups are actually wanting that water to come down this way. Another interesting thing about it is, you know, we get asked the question a lot of the time as well, "Would you fill your swimming pool with that water?" Probably not. But I would fill my swimming pool with that water, with, I'd treat the water effluent before I would treat it, fill it with Root River water. Because Root River water, if any of you are familiar with that, it's not very clean. Having worked and lived in that area for, we actually lived in that area for nine years, and I've worked there for four years. I know the Root River pretty well. It's not very clean. It's not a very nice river. It needs the additional flow. And we get told, some of the people in that area like to say, "Well, we don't want to be Waukesha's toilet." Unfortunately, that analogy is kind of backwards because we would be the clean water in the tank flushing the bad stuff down the bowl because our water, our treated effluent is that clean. So, that's the project. Service area comes up an awful lot. That is a huge issue that comes up a lot. It's very interesting, though, that the people that brought it up, the people that made the law or requirement statewide by 2026. They are the ones that advised the governor and the legislators to create service areas so that there's planning involved. There's notes that they provided to legislators that were submitted to the Legislative Bureau when they were writing the law that says, "This is how we should do this, and we should make it mandatory for the state." These are the same people that are now opposing the service area. So, it's kind of interesting that the laws that they wanted us to follow are now the laws that they don't want us to follow now that they're criticizing our plan for. But anyway, with regards to service area, we have the city of Waukesha. The city of Puywaki, we provide service to that area. That was done by border agreement many years ago. We can't change that. The town of Waukesha is in our sewer service area. One of the things with this plan right here is that it has to, the state law said, it has to mirror our wastewater sewer service area, which has been in place for decades. And one of the reasons why is because you have to return all the water to the Great Lakes. So, the only way you can return it is if you collect it. And the way you collect it is have it in near sanitary sewer service area. So, the water service area had to mirror the wastewater service area. The other thing, the town of Genesee and this thing right here, the town of Genesee was added at the request of the DNR because they already have water issues. They have failing septic systems that are contaminating their groundwater. They have special casing requirements in the town of Genesee right now. Sharon Lear, the town chair in Genesee, came to the Waukesha hearing and sent in a letter to the, sent in a letter to the regional body saying, "We need this water. We want to be in this area." The town of Waukesha, you know, they, again, they tried to go through this where they were going to look at essentially creating a different service area. We actually requested Sewer Path to change the service area and modify it the way they wanted to. And we were told by the state, "It doesn't apply with state law. You can't do that." So, the town of Waukesha wanted to modify this. And then what ultimately happened is, the people who wanted to modify it were all voted out of office. And the people that wanted to keep it in the service area were all voted into office. They actually had a town hall meeting. I was talking with John Merrick, he's the town chair. They had a town hall meeting where there were 300 people at it. And it was about the water issue and whether you wanted to be included in the service area or not. At the end of the meeting, he said, "Okay, if you want to be in the water service area, stand." 95% of the people stood. And then they all sat down. He said, "If you're opposed, stand." There were like a dozen people that stood. So, majority of the people in the town of Waukesha want to be in the service area. So, in fact, I believe when we were trying to make that change, we had the largest number of acres come into the city because there are a number of people that annexed into the city so they wouldn't lose that alternative option. But then, some people like to talk about our service area and say, "We're doing this huge land right because we want to develop and we want to grow our community." Well, if you look at our service area, you look at the city of Waukesha within the service area, you see all this land around it, and you're like, "Wow, we are adding a lot of area." You know, there is a lot of area, and then we're adding our service area. But then you throw in the streets. That's the area that's already developed. There's existing homes on Well and Seppit there. So, we're talking about transferring those homes from Well and Seppit to municipal services. But then you add in the environmental corridor, and then you look, develop the land, 85% of the land is already developed. We're talking about just switching them. If we were talking, if we were looking today, we'd need 9 million gallons a day to service everyone in our area. So, all this growth that we're grabbing all this land for, all we need to supply is 1 million gallons of water a day. So, there's very little water that's coming for future growth. I also like to argue that, one of the points I like to make is, we're going to argue about 1 million gallons a day? Really? We're going to potentially send this decision to the courts and have the courts make the decision on whether the Great Lakes are protected over 1 million gallons a day? To me, if you approve Waukesha, you set the compact in stone, the Great Lakes will be there forever. They like to compare this, they like to say, "We don't want to see the Great Lakes become the next Carol C, which is in Russia. And it was a huge lake, I don't know, I wouldn't like the size of one of the Great Lakes." And it's basically gone. And what they did is they did a bunch of Chicago diversions where they were taking water out and not taking it back. We're taking 1 millionth of 1% of the water, and we're putting it all back. So, and again, only 15% of the land is available for future growth. The Compact Implementation Coalition, a lot of the Wheel of Waukesha Environmental Action League is part of this. There's a number of different, number of different environmental... There's a number of different, number of different environmental groups that are proposed with it. They all came up with their alternative. They hired an engineer and came up with their alternative at the fifth hour, um, or at the ninth hour. And what happened, the D N R looked at it and the D N R said, it doesn't meet what we needed to meet. It doesn't need, they overstated the, they overestimated the capacity of the existing wells. They didn't take into account that when you put in RO, you lose twenty percent of the water. And they would not meet the requirement of the court order. So it does not comply. Um, we would also have to add, so we would have to add additional shallow wells and it would have nine hundred to a thousand acres of wetlands. To put that into perspective, that's about seven hundred football fields. That's how many wetlands would be negatively impacted as a result of going to the shallow water. Seven hundred football fields. And they say that's better. I say it's not. And I can tell you this much, if they went out to the Great Lakes, they'll be fighting this just as much when we go for high capacity well permits adjacent to the Bering Marsh. And I, I don't believe they're gonna win because I believe we need all the criteria. So water conservation, I'll quick through this, we are actually ahead of our water conservation goal. We have sprinkling ordinance, um, we have incentives for industrial customers. The one criticism we get here, I will tell you, is that, and our business manager actually testified against this, is because we didn't implement two of our objectives in our consideration plan. Those objectives were showerheads and urinals. So we need to have a showerhead in, uh, replacement program and a urinal replacement program. If we would have replaced everything that we were supposed to in our plan with those, with those two objectives, we would have saved about two hundred eighty-seven thousand gallons of water. Instead, we went after the commercial and industrial property, commercial and industrial properties because we saw the benefits of going to them. So we've done some things with the school district, we've done some things with, uh, some businesses, we've given thirty to, thirty to fit up to fifty thousand dollars to implement conservation. And each business has saved one point seven million gallons, well above our showerheads and urinals. So we went, we went after where we could be more, more effective, not necessarily following the program. We adapted. So we did our demand projections, uh, three different ways of calculating a demand projection. We're asking for ten million gallons a day, which is right in the middle. It is a reasonable amount. One of the things you don't wanna do, which is what they would like us to do, is select this lower amount, eight point five million gallons a day. What do you do then if you have a business and it gets back up to where they were in pre, pre nine eleven and using that much water and, and really, um, going to hand bust you guys a bit? We have to ask the city of Waukesha, tell them, we're sorry, we can't provide you any more water, you have to leave. I don't think that's a good position for our, for our city to be in. So that's why we're asking for a reasonable amount of water, which is ten point one million gallons a day. Return to Lake Michigan, we'll, we'll share the pipeline route. That is huge. And I can just, and I can tell you how huge that is. We just bid a, we just bid a project on the bypass. Last year we did a project, it was about a mile long. We've been, we've bid, we've bid that project last year. We estimated this year a project on the bypass about a mile of napalm based off of the previous year. We're putting in two pipes this year. And when we talked to the contractor, we said, what, you know, what are the benefits of that? And they said, well, you know, because of the traffic control and everything we have to do, there's not much benefit. Okay. So we estimated our project, eight point two million dollars. We were bidding on our project for eight point two million dollars. The county council just awarded it four point three million. We saved fifty percent because we're in a common corridor. That's how much you save when you're in a common corridor. And we talked to the contractors after that and they were playing, playing it close to the vest. They said, well, look, we can have all these people working at the same time and now there's very little downtime. It is so efficient if we can be putting in two pipes and going down, working one, come back, work the other and people can be moving right down. It's so efficient and cost effective for us, we can make a lot of money and we can save you a lot of money. So that's the benefit. Um, again, the increased, increased water will help out the Root River. We're gonna be returning a hundred percent of the water. The Compact requires you to return the volume you, you use minus an allowance for consumptive use. Our consumptive use in Waukesha is around eight to ten percent. So we, in order to meet the requirements of the Compact, we would have to return about ninety percent of our water. We're going above and beyond that and setting the standard at a hundred percent. We're gonna return a hundred percent of the water. How do we do that? In every system, in every wastewater system, there's infiltration of groundwater or rainwater into the system. The wastewater treatment plant always treats more than we treat. So we have an average of eight million gallons a day, their average is ten million gallons a day. So we know we can return a hundred percent of the water and we've committed to doing that, which means we're setting that precedent for everyone else in the future that would potentially come. There will be no impact on lake levels due to this diversion. And what does that do? If for some reason the compact gets voided or gets thrown out later on and California does come knocking, now you say, okay, you can have the water, not that I'm saying they can have it, but you gotta return it all because that's the precedent we set. And that will lead to cost prohibitive and it won't ever happen. So again, and the return wastewater will need to meet all, all political standards. It's interesting, another interesting argument that comes up, they'll say they don't want the water, they don't want the endocrine disruptors, I'll start throwing out these words, endocrine disruptors, pharmaceuticals, all this stuff. Then you ask them, what do you treat for that in your, in your city? No. Okay, well, when those regulations come out, we'll beat them. But, so we have them saying they don't want it there and we have Waukesha and people downstream saying, we don't wanna lose that water. What's gonna happen if we lose that water? Well, the impact is negligible here, but it's a huge gain there. Plus you'll have the base flow from us stopped losing the shallow water. You'll have some increased base flow at those areas. And I'm, and I see you walking forward, so I'm gonna move, I'll go past eight fifteen and then probably promise to get you off. But okay, Lake Michigan and the Great Lakes, we're asking for ten point one million gallons a day. It's less than one one millionth of one percent whether you compare it to the Great Lakes or Lake Michigan. And again, we're putting that water back. To put that in perspective, we like to say it's a teaspoon out of an Olympic sized swimming pool and then you turn right around and put that teaspoon back. There's no impact. Again, benefits, we're able to recycle and reuse the water, um, and get it back into Lake Michigan with groundwater we can't. We're able to enhance the fisheries in Lake Michigan. It also eliminates the radium disposal issue. Right now, radium is radioactive material. When you bring it up, the half-life of radium is five hundred years. So now we're dealing with that radioactive material for five hundred years. If I put it through a special media to just get rid of the radium, like some utilities do in Southeastern Wisconsin, you have to send that waste to Utah because it's considered radioactive material to get rid of it. You're responsible for it forever. Right now, it comes out of the wastewater process, some of it goes down the Fox River, some of it's in the sludge and that sludge is land applied. And they monitor how much radium gets land applied. And who knows where those, where those requirements are going to be or where there's, where those are going to be. So now you eliminate that need and then you also eliminate, I always thought it was seven million pounds of salt, but we recalculated it, it's about nine million pounds of salt we eliminate from going down the Fox River every year by eliminating water softeners in the city of Waukesha. So again, we have a unique set of facts, we can kinda go over this, I won't, I won't read this all to you. It's just that we've tried to show that it is a unique situation here. It's not something that applies to everyone else. The biggest thing's out, we're using groundwater that's already, already, um, can, can, uh, contingent, or goes to the Great Lakes. We're returning a hundred percent of the water, um, we're within that, we're, we're close enough to the area where you can get the water. And so there's a lot of unique facts about us and we went through the environmental impact statement process. Here's the basin, the Great Lakes basin on a map, and this is my last slide, I promise, I think. I don't wanna get paid as well. So here's the Great Lakes basin, these yellow, that yellow is the Stralen Counties. So those are only the people that can apply. If, if we opened up the floodgates for this, we opened it up for the people in the Stralen Counties. In the Stralen Counties, the population is about thirty-five times the population of Waukesha. So you're talking about thirty-five Waukeshas if everyone wanna get serviced. And I can tell you, there's some people in central Wisconsin that are never gonna be looking to Lake Michigan or Lake Superior for their water because you just can't get there cost effectively. So there's, if you look at everybody in here, you know, you'd service about thirty-five Waukeshas, if you look at everybody, every state has potential of having a community in Stralen County with the exception of Michigan. However, the reason the law is put in place in the Compact is because Michigan didn't necessarily raise vote, um, or not just Michigan, but there, the vote wasn't like based off the science and facts, it was based off of politics. And now the vote's supposed to be based off of, off of science. If you witness, about ninety-nine percent of the population that's outside of the basin is locked out, wouldn't be eligible to apply for Great Lakes water. Less than one percent would be able to apply. Yes. And so you can go to, you can go to our website if you want more information, there's more information than you can even imagine.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, real quick. Real quick, I just wanna be respectful of everyone's time. It's eight thirty-five. I'm okay, we can have for another twenty minutes and, and take some questions.
Just as long as it's not past nine o'clock, 'cause I don't wanna get arrested.
Just for the record, he took longer than I did.
I don't know. Uh, but I would say, yeah, at this point, whether you have a question for me, Dan or the chief, we can just go ahead and fire him off and answer.
Go ahead.
Okay. I saw that you had the projection up to twenty fifty and it was the ten point one million gallons a day. What if our need increases? Do we have to go through this whole process again and do we have to do it again after twenty fifty when population and use increases? Cause that would be very, very much.
Yes, it would. But I will tell you that that projection is for build-out at twenty fifty. So we're estimating that the build-out would occur at twenty fifty. If it takes longer than that to go there, then there wouldn't be, then there, you know, we wouldn't be using that water. So we've looked at it conservatively and projected whatever would be of that, if everything in this area, in our service area was about how much water we need, we projected that that's gonna happen by twenty fifty.
So then in twenty fifty, we'll have to go through this whole application process again?
I don't, I don't think so. Because we won't grow beyond that. There won't be anywhere else to, to house a, to build anything. And we would be at that.
But maybe you actually could change it.
It could.
And you could have greater water usage still.
If we wanted to get more water or we wanted to service outside of that service area, we're gonna have to go back through this process. I do believe though, as they get more comfortable with this process and see that it's a benefit, um, that we're the first people going through it unfortunately, so there's a lot higher power. And I believe as they, as, I don't think there's going to be a lot of people that go through it to be honest after they see what we've done. But, um, I do believe that there'll be a better understanding of the process than that one. Yes?
What kind of assurance is there that we won't run into political problems with Oak Creek at some point?
Well, that's a great question. We will have a contract that's forty years in length with an, with an automatic renewal for another forty years. So it'll be, it's an eighty-year contract. And the rates are set by the Public Service Commission, so there's really, politics shouldn't come into play because it's a regulatory agency that sets rates. They've also talked and discussed with us, part of our agreement is that they'll discuss a regional water authority with us and other customers, which means we would buy into the water treatment plant, which means we'd have part ownership with it, and then we'd be involved in setting those rates. And not to say that that's gonna go through, but that was very attractive to the council when they were looking at it and it was very, it was very attractive. Sorry. A very attractive point in our, of the letter. Yes. Sorry. I have a few questions. Do you say you wanna interview?
Sure, I'm ready. Um, first, I, first, Dan and, um, for several years, I'm, I'm, I listen to both sides of the Waukesha water issue. At this point, I'm beginning to wonder who or what to believe and truth will work in this endeavor. I ran for alderman in two thousand twelve and one of the questions that have been constantly asked me was about the water issue. And my answer always was that we have a water supply that's clean and sustainable and that Lake Michigan seemed to be the answer. And I intended, uh, what are the information meetings that was presented in March of two thousand twelve? You guys may remember where I'm at. And, uh, and I asked you at the time, um, to get a better understanding of where we were in the process, of what the timetable was. And you, you stated that you expected approval from the D N R to come within a few weeks and approval by the governors at the end of the year and construction is beginning early two thousand thirteen. And now, four years later, and a lot of money spent in that two thousand eighteen deadline is coming fast and we still haven't got an answer. And one of the questions raised by the opponents of this application is that Waukesha wants more water for the future development. And during the past few years, more apartments are being, were, and are being built, a clear water project for one. And now just this past month, there's nine family condos that were approved to be built in the rivers crossing the subdivision. And I've also heard that several large developments are being proposed in part of Waukesha, all of which are on the service issue, on service area. And my questions for, for you two is, why does the city and town keep moving forward with these projects when they know that the opponents are going to use this argument against the approval? And wouldn't any, wouldn't the authority with any type of development or service area show the Great Lakes governors that we are serious about conservation instead of just the opposite?
And I have a point out to you, first off, uh, any questions? First, and the first thing I want to point out to you is that the compact was never put in place to control growth. There is actually no development component in the compact. In fact, it's just the opposite. It's a requirement that you accommodate for future growth. So what they didn't want you to do is to come back, you know, and say, this subdivision needs water, so I need, I need more application. They didn't want you to have to go through that process. So they wanted you to plan out for the future and they wanted you to look at what that service area would be. I would argue that Wisconsin went by far, went far beyond what the compact had envisioned when they were first putting it. Most states do not define a specific area that you have to provide service to. They say, here's what you need, here's twenty-five percent more, come back if you need more than that and we'll look at it that way. Um, you know, for, for growth, here's, here's twenty-five percent more. If they would do that for us, we'd be fine. Wisconsin actually defined a specific area and then allotted volumes for each of those specific areas. So they went far beyond what the, the compact had envisioned originally. And I say that because if the town of Waukesha doesn't need water for twenty more years, what it's not, Waukesha's not gonna get their allocation to be able to sell it to wherever they want. It's allocated for that area in town, Waukesha. So it's just good planning. When you're building a pipeline that's gonna last for a hundred years, you don't know what's gonna happen in that hundred years. And the last thing you wanna do is to have the city leaders be put in a position where a business does wanna locate in Waukesha and we have to turn them down because we don't have enough water supply for them. So the, the compact wants you to plan and look at future growth and make sure that you accommodate for it so that you're not coming back every year, every five years. They want that, you, they want, only want you to have to go through this once. And again, like I said, when you're building a pipeline for a hundred years, the last thing you wanna do is build something that's too small and you can't provide enough water. So it's not an anti-growth piece of legislation. We do incorporate conservation, I think there's a lot of development practices that the city uh, includes in a lot of their developments with the new, with the new requirements for developments that are conservation friendly. But we do have a serious public health issue here and we need to address that public health issue. I don't wanna say unfortunately, cause that sounds like a wrong word. It's not an acute public health issue. So Flint is an acute public health issue, it needs to be addressed right now. We're more of a chronic health issue where it takes a long time for there to be impacts. But I still argue, it's a public health issue and we need to address it. And the most reasonable way for us to address it is with a Great Lakes alternative. I will also tell you that I wouldn't necessarily trust everything you read. Look at the environmental apex thing that you and I put together, it was very well done. Um, they spent five years putting it together, there's a technical review document that goes with it that summarizes things. Um, they, they, they go into great detail and I was so impressed at the meetings that we had when the governors were, the representatives were here to the other states because they Because they were asked a question, and they said, "That's in Table 10 on Appendix E", and they flipped right to it, and they had the answer for the person. I mean, they know this thing back and forth, they've looked at it. And if there was an easier solution for this, we would be doing it. That's one of the questions I'd like to throw out to the, like, a lot of our opponents. Why are we doing this if there's an easier alternative? It doesn't make sense.
I guess, I'm not questioning that.
Right.
No, I mean, I like, I like the statement. But I'm looking at it from what I read and hear from the opponents, and I've been to all the water meetings.
Right.
And what I hear from them is, they're saying that the need is not there. And now, and we go ahead and we start developing these areas, the apartments I remember talking to about, and now I just saw the other things that's being developed. So what the opponents are saying is, does Waukesha really need this? Because look what they're doing, they're adding more and more and more. That's my, that's my point.
Yeah, what I would say to you is, it's at a level here that it's not anywhere else in the basin. For example, in Michigan, we have a public hearing in Michigan, there were 15 people that came up to testify for four hours period. You know, people weren't necessarily, when you talk to people, you say you're returning 100% of the water, a lot of times the people say, "Well, then what station? What's the problem?" As long as you're putting it back in line. We went out to Duluth, there were more people from Wisconsin, from this area that went up to Duluth than Duluth residents were there. You know, and a lot of the Duluth residents came up to being the mayor afterwards and said, you know, again, if you're putting the water back, what's the problem? You know, if that is sustainable, then if you set that precedent, that's what we want. Isn't that what we want? You know, it's, again, I know it's a rhetorical question, but one that I like to ask the opponents, and I've talked to them ahead about this, you know, it's, why would we be going through this if we didn't need, if there was an easier solution? It wouldn't make sense.
To your specific example, the clear water apartments, there's a apartment complex in the Rivers Crossing, neighborhood's been built, is being built, and for quite a while was kind of contentious. I remember looking at it independently like I do any other issue, and yeah, that was part of it, is, should be building a lot more apartments. And I actually reached out to Dan, this would be at least a few years ago now, and he talked to that point of planning, that because it was zoned that way, that was planned as part of it, that we weren't adding hurtful things to the application after the fact. So it, to a point, took that argument away from me, but it also gave me, you know, that knowledge that, that we have that included, well, in my opinion, we should be mindful of all this, is the rezoning of properties. Those apartments eventually just got approved there, because that's what they're zone for, and that's what the owner wanted to do. And that's the case in a lot of other places, when it comes to business as well. It's rezoning large areas of property that, and then doing something that could be hurtful, or at least the perception of hurtful, is something that I'm mindful of.
Earlier, when you were asked about the fire station possibly being placed next to St. John Newman, you alluded to the fact of the reconstruction of that intersection of 59 and X with the bypass. Is there a timeline yet for when that will be done?
The fire station or the bypass?
The bypass, the intersection. Both?
Well, you could also add a development plan for the, that section of land there, kind of in southeast of the, of that intersection.
Across the street.
The bypass plans, the folks who want to develop the business area as well as our construction of the fire station eventually, we're all knowledgeable where everything's gonna go. So we're not putting something there, and then we get a move in in a few years. Timeline for the fire station, I think we could have a shovel on the ground a year from now. Don't vote me on that, because I also, I think, said that a year ago. But based off of...
I said, I said, can't look at it.
Yeah. The area by, across the road from the Chirston, where I had a meeting with a developer that liked to put in a higher-end brochure, but being my district, there's one business in my district, it's the Lawrence School, it's a daycare. So I'm very interested in being very involved in that particular project, and making sure that we get businesses in there that people in our area want to go shop at. And the large feedback I got is, we don't want any more discount stores. And this developer had put in some discount stores recently in Waukesha, so it was a very blunt conversation with him about that. But his optimistic view was they'd like to have something being built there this year yet. I think that's, that's really optimistic. But talking about zoning too, that's an area that I know some neighbors who live close to there are very...
That'd be us.
Okay. You know, are very mindful of, you know, we don't want to stare at the back of the building. And I've shared that zoning map with some people, that there's some conservancy there that no development's gonna occur. And in fact, almost half of that area is actually conservancy. And there's a large area of it that will serve as a buffer from those houses, which are, some of them are the nicest in my district. And there's trees there, I know there, some are at least about 40 feet tall, that you're not gonna be right up next to a building. But again, because of the zoning, because someone's purchased it, so it is gonna be developed. So I want to work with them to make sure we get something that we all can use. Because again, there, market research says, hey, look at all these people here and around, you know, let's, they should be able to support a business, so.
But isn't it kind of odd that just down the street where the Century Stores, every single one of those other buildings is empty and has been empty for a long time?
Yeah, that's, that's a...
Hasn't talked about that, having 20% empty, now you're gonna add more?
And when that was downtown, the 20% was in the central city area.
Okay. But this is just down the road.
But you're right, yeah, Fox Run is definitely, I mean, I know Steve Crandall, our former community development director, as well as our current owner, Jim Randus, it's primed for redevelopment. However, if it's placed in there, what goes in there, again, that'll remain to be seen. But new development is also, it's important, don't try not to get goings too much on this, but the city participates in the expenditure, what, I'm lost, expenditure restraint program. What that is, is we agree not to raise taxes so much, and then the state gives us money. They give us about a little shy of $2 million. The amount that we get to raise is based off of 60% of new construction, so not redevelopment. So while I would love to see that ISORD switched, from a tax standpoint, it's helpful for us to have redevelopment also. And in some of these cases where the building is the corner of Main and 164, I believe that lease is paid for for a good amount of years, and so the owner doesn't need any redevelopment. Their business didn't succeed, but again, they're not paying anything other than just property taxes at that point too. What big questions, Spox there?
And I guess, I guess most of the neighbors I've talked to about have a big concern of River Valley Road, and they're becoming a thoroughfare into these businesses, even though you've said, even they emailed you, and you said it's just gonna go into their parking lot. I mean, what's to keep all kinds of people, and even the high school kids, from racing down River Valley Road, which has a neighborhood park right on it, into the parking lot, and then getting back out on it too? Are there gonna be entrances and exits from 59 and from X into this development, or don't you know?
Yes. The plans I saw, yes, there were. But it's not, it's not gonna go straight out to 59 again, it's gonna be, we'll do traffic control, we'll put stop signs where they need to be, and again, you kind of have to wait until it's developed and see what the traffic flows are. Though that road, you know, it always meant to be into some sort of development there, again, it was zoned for it, so they built the neighborhood a long time ago, it was gonna go in there eventually. And yet, will there be an increase in traffic? Yes, there will.
But there will be exits and entrances on 59 and on X besides River Valley Road? I would hope.
Well, River Valley Road, the plans I've seen, it'll go again, go into the parking lot. So it won't go straight to 59. You will be able to access that development from two entrances though. So one will be off the eventual bypass, and one will be off 59. Which of course is the appeal of your business there, you want people to be able to drive in.
You'll have to have cross-traffic across 59 or the bypass and X, that's, those are busy roads.
Yeah.
Put another, cross-traffic across those roads, that's, you're asking for more accidents, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, anytime you add more vehicles, that's, that's...
Just like here, they didn't put an entrance on 59, you know, to the...
The bank.
You know, to the bank and the industrial park, they're basically, we'll land in...
Sure. Yeah, the bypass will certainly change the element of that whole intersection altogether. Part of the point of the bypass too was, was to help with safety, so.
But won't it be a problem if he wants to build this development before the bypass is done, to know where they can enter and exit on 59 and X?
Well, they have those plans.
And they do.
Yeah. That was my first question, because I met with a developer a little over a year ago who wanted to build there too, and it didn't happen. So, it's like, you might want to go find out where these roads are gonna go. All right.
Very well.
Yes, thank you. I really, really appreciate everybody coming tonight together. I had never done one of these before, and so to have, I believe I counted 25 people show up and take your evening with us, I appreciate it. I think we were, I was only really competing with the Republican debate, so I got 25 people.
Badger game. If we didn't get a chance to ask something, I know some of you guys asked a question you want me to follow up on, you can go right on the city website, look under Police Department or whatever department you're looking for, emails right there, we are very responsive to emails.
And my business cards are sitting on the table, so if we could grab one of those and they're gonna be in our call log. Thank you.